May I hear from the chair?
Aye.
Lauren Stuck?
Aye.
Rosalyn Green?
Aye.
Marilyn Douglasson?
Aye.
Rick Johnson?
Aye.
Thank you. Unanimous.
Great, thank you. Just so everyone knows, as you heard, this meeting is being recorded, and we are allowed to be having this video meeting per guidelines provided by, provided by the governor to allow for virtual meetings of governing boards and such. We are going to be having some extra-long pauses to allow anyone who, any member of the public who wishes to make a comment on an item to have sufficient time to unmute yourself or raise your hand and be unmuted. And I'll also be asking the superintendent president to let us know if any public comments were submitted via email. We did make that an option so that those can be read into the record as well. So with that, we go to our first item, which is public comments. This is for any item that is not on today's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to make public comments? Okay, Mr. Martin, did we receive any general public comment for an item not on today's agenda?
We did not receive any public comment via email on items not on today's agenda.
Great, thank you. With that, a closed public comment, and we'll go to first item on the agenda, which is organization reports and presentation. The first report we have is from the ASNPC. There was a written report, but is there anyone on the line who wanted to speak to the ASNPC report?
I have a question. Can people unmute themselves if they have a comment? Sean?
Yes, I will make sure that everyone's unmuted in case they're not muting themselves.
Okay, thank you.
So I just unmuted all participants.
Okay, so not seeing anybody making a comment. Did we receive any public comment on the ASNPC report? Mr. Martin?
No, we did not.
Okay. Is there any board member who has a question or comment to make about the ASNPC report?
Would hope we would read into the meeting, being that it's recorded, the questions that the ASNPC...
Sorry, Rick, just one second. You're kind of breaking up, and someone is aggressively typing, so if you could mute yourself, if you're the aggressive typer. All right, Rick, go ahead.
Yeah, by the way, I certainly admire the aggressive typer because mine is so slow. I'd just like us to address the questions that are in this report as far as students seeking a withdrawal and not having it affect their transcript.
Thank you. That's the same question I had. Mr. Martin?
Yes, thank you very much. And to address the question in the report regarding the student's ability to potentially withdraw or drop a class with no notation on their transcript, the state legislators and the chancellor's office are currently working on providing an exemption through California ed code to allow this to happen. So once MPC receives the exemption language, we will communicate to the students their ability and what the process is for withdrawing from a class if they so choose, and it's not being recorded on their transcript.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we will deem that report received. Is there an academic senate report? Or anyone on the phone to make a report?
I just want to let you know that I'm here on the, on audio.
Welcome, Robert.
Yeah, I just can't seem to get through on the video.
What Marilyn was saying earlier, our local system is being very much overwhelmed, so probably, but we're glad you're on us with us via phone. Were you on the phone during the ASNPC report?
Has, I just logged on. I mean, I just called in. Has Ream spoken to it?
No, Ream did not speak to the report.
Okay.
But we did have trustee Johnson bring up the issue that was addressed in the report related to withdrawals and reflection on academic records. And President Martin let us know that the state is working on addressing that issue.
Right, I heard President Martin's response. I do have some expanded comments built on that, you know, very, very fine communication from Ream Benny, but perhaps I should wait until my remarks, you know, and my turn in the comments for that, or do you want me to say them now?
I think it's appropriate to do during the ASNPC report.
Okay, fine. Well, we had a student council meeting last Friday, and a good part of the, early part of the meeting had to do with just sensing where people were and, you know, what was going well, what was not going well, and it was, I think, a very productive session. And I think Ream caught the main thrust of that. The only things that I would add to that would be, first of all, the concerns about refunds and the request that even though we're statutorily late for refunds, if somebody feels they just can't make a go of it online, that they can receive a full refund. And also the concern about refunds for parking. And I understand that's governed by statute and is in the works. David, do you want to comment on that? Or you already have?
Yes, I can jump in, student trustee Johnson, and just reiterate the comments from before, and that is, the state legislators have acknowledged that students should have the ability to drop and not receive a scripted mark. They are working with the chancellor's office to find that process, and that information will be given to local districts as soon as possible for us to implement at the local level.
Yeah, good. That's, that's good news. And so in addition to that, I would just add a couple of observations of my own. The concern where students said that they were not engaging with, with the online work was, was when there was no interaction, when they, or they got an assignment, you know, online, they submitted the assignment online. Sometimes they didn't get feedback on it, and they just got another assignment and submitted another assignment. And particularly for extroverts, I think that the need for human interaction in their courses is really important. And in massage, we're addressing this by having virtual happy hours once a week. Other people, I know are addressing this by having class meetings or extended office hours, but the challenge of trying to do online work without human interaction is, is quite intense. Moving from, from the issue of online interaction to just the, the issue of being informed, I'm sure you can imagine the anxiety and the concern that students are having, not knowing what's happening and where things are going. And I just want to urge everyone as much as possible to communicate down at the class level, to, you know, to bring students together online and to involve them in decision-making. I had a very, well, a very moving conversation earlier today with, with a student who called me, and, and I want to, I want to read it to you because it conveys some of the anguish that, that our students are feeling. She said, "I feel like I've been taken hostage. They've put a black bag over my head. I've been tied up and stuffed in the trunk of a car. I don't know where I am or where I'm going. All I can feel is fear and despair." Now, that might sound melodramatic, but it, what's, what is so disempowering about not knowing what is happening is, is this, is this feeling that you've lost control and that you don't know what's coming next. And so I know that everybody is working really hard, and everybody is operating at 200%, but I would just like to highlight the need to inform and, and involve students in the process of these decisions. Okay, that's all.
Robert, can I ask a question about that communication interaction you had? So was that students specifically addressing how the college has been communicating or not with them, or just in general about the situation with COVID-19 in our community? Because I've been getting a lot of email communications from administrations, copies of things that are going out to students, that are going out to faculty, that feel like it's been very, very communicative about where we are as a college and a district with...
Well, I think that's true, and I've been getting the same, the same pieces of information. But down at the program level, down at, you know, is this course going to be canceled or is it not? Is it, you know, am I going to be able to graduate on time? How do I, you know, how do I navigate my future? You know, that isn't at all clear down at the program level.
And David?
And maybe it is, sorry, maybe it is at some level, but, but, you know, in, in some courses, but in many, it is not. In many, in many instances, people have gotten, you know, half, you know, half a sentence about, oh, this course is canceled, period. And, and, you know, that is, that is producing a lot of anxiety.
So, I guess, I mean, there's a couple of different things that, that are going through my head. One is, what protocols are in place for notifying students of class cancellations? And then what other sort of services do we have in place, and how do students access them for, for the real anxiety and fears that a lot of people are having right now? And that's a question, I guess, to David and your team.
Yes, and thank you very much for that question. And in regards to the services that are available for students, right now, we have our entire spectrum of student support services and academic counseling and academic support services available online. We have transitioned to fully online in regards to all of the services that a student could potentially receive face-to-face here on campus at MPC. So it's making sure that that information's continuously sent out to the students. We've sent several emails to the students, and we'll continue to send those emails to make sure that students are aware of the services available to them online to answer some of these challenging questions that are being posed at this time. In regards to class cancellations, right now, as we are still relatively new in this process in respects to receiving the shelter-in-place order not quite a week ago, or just about a week ago, we are still working through a lot of the regulatory questions in regards to our requirements, credentialing requirements, and different types of legal expectations that are imposed on courses of academic programs to make sure that when we do communicate decisions to students, and we are deciding on whether or not to move forward with a class at this point, we're doing so in an informed manner, to where we know what students are in the class, where those students are at in their academic programs, and any decisions that are made, how is that going to have potential ramifications on transfer credit, on program continuance, in looking at the whole picture as opposed to just making individual decisions based on a course title or the nature of the course. So those conversations are happening right now. They're happening at multiple levels, and they'll continue to happen as soon as we get back from spring break next week, in order for us to communicate to the students as fast and as efficiently as possible.
Rick, you're muted, Rick. Oh, go ahead, Lauren.
Just a quick question. How many classes are we teaching in the spring, and how many have been canceled since the, since the outbreak? Do you have any sense?
Yes, and we are currently still offering our entire course schedule of the spring. At this point, we have not officially canceled any courses, to my knowledge, in regards to the current situation that we're in. So no courses have officially been canceled or made it all the way through the cancellation process. Thank you.
David, could you update us on the very volatile situation of the nurses program and other, other, you know, essential services? I know that that's very fluid, and, and, but I wonder if you could tell us where we are on that and, and the prospects of getting them back on campus?
Before we answer that question, David, I think Rick had one more comment or question on the previous topic.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sounds like a commercial, doesn't it? Robert, thank you very much for what you were bringing up, because we really need to hear this. Going to college is certainly a social interaction, and suddenly that's been removed. David, I'm wondering if it would be possible, I don't think that students necessarily tune in to trustee meetings, but would there be a way for you to address the students, either through some kind of a virtual town hall, or even just a recording that goes through some of these questions that people can plug into?
That's a really good question, trustee Johnson. One of the things that we'll be implementing over the next couple weeks is virtual presidential office hours. We've historically had office hours or open hours in regards to anything that the students may need. So moving forward, at least the other week, we'll have a three-to-four-hour time slot where students can log into a Zoom meeting with myself and members of staff to really have an open discussion and provide any input and feedback or ask any questions that they may have. So we definitely want to make sure that we have options outside of just standard email to make sure we're engaging our students and getting their feedback and getting them the help that they need.
You know, that probably would, would solve, or at least mitigate this. But I'm also wondering if you could do a 20 or 25-minute recording that, that students on a weekly basis can go to, not interact with you, but where you're answering the most common questions we're getting?
Yes, and that is something that, in conjunction with our public information office and office of advancement, we're looking at developing ways to communicate some of the frequently asked questions that we're getting and starting to get. We want to make sure that we don't do information overload, but provide the information that is the highest need of our students. And we're really getting to the point where we're starting to see some typical questions that a majority of our students have, so we can focus our resources, providing specific answers to the top 20 or so most important questions, and get that out as early as next week.
Great, thank you, David.
So if you guys will allow me, well, I think we'll table the question about the nursing program until we get to the declarations related to the disaster.
Okay.
And see if we can make it through the rest of these reports, and then our consent, and then we'll be able to have a conversation about specific things. So academic senate report, is there anyone on the line to provide an academic senate report? All right, MPCEA, yes?
Can I, can I ask one more question of David, since we don't have an academic senate report, back on the previous topic? I'm just, I worry, I listen, I hear Robert, and I worry that there are students who, even though no classes have been canceled yet, and, and I know that you're going to, maybe this will be one of the top 20 questions, but just so we know, we have, we've always had kind of a soft, lower limit for class size before we canceled classes. If some, if a course goes below that soft minimum number because of students dropping out, since they don't want to be in a totally online environment, do you anticipate our canceling classes for that reason or not? That's the question, I guess, maybe that would, might alleviate people's fears.
And thank you very much for that question. And at this point, for this specific semester, the initial response would be no, that as we move forward for the remainder of this semester, if the curriculum is transferred online and students are still in the course, we are going to continue with that course for the remainder of this semester, regardless of the number of...
So David is frozen, and we're getting feedback. All right, David, I can see you, but I'm still getting feedback.
You're still getting feedback?
Like an echo. So I think someone probably has an iPad and a phone on.
I just joined. I can see you now. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so I'm now on the computer. I can see just you, and I can see the screen, and I don't have any other piece of equipment near me.
Did you hang up your phone?
There you are. Oh, no, go on.
It's only when I talk. Do you have it in speaker view? If you go up to your upper right-hand corner, you can click on it, and you can put it into gallery view.
All right, all right.
And Joe Ream or Sean, if you could invite Robert to share his videos?
Okay.
I will do a Yuri.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're still getting an echo, so somebody has two audios going at once. But, but we'll work through it. David, you were answering Lauren's question when you froze.
Yes, so at this point in the semester, we would not cancel the course because of the number of students involved in the course, regardless of whether it continues to stay online throughout this process.
Great, great. All right, so before we move on, we're going to try and figure out why we have an echo.
Might be wise for everybody to mute until they have a question, and then you hit unmute at that point in time. So I'm seeing, I'm seeing several people not muted as I scroll, looking at people's pictures, just so you know.
Okay, well, it sounds like the echo has disappeared, so, great. All right, so we had no one available to make an academic senate report. I think that's still true. So we were on to an MPCEA report. Anyone available for that report? And you'll need to unmute yourself if you are trying to talk. All righty, MPCTA report. And I realize that we were going into spring break, and it's been a really weird time, but David, if you could really encourage folks to submit these written reports, particularly as we move into this kind of virtual meeting environment, it's, you know, either the written report or someone coming to talk is the best way for the board to stay informed from these groups. So if you could just encourage that, it would be helpful. Okay, so with that, we'll move to the consent calendar, and I can't scroll. So we have items 6A through 6L. Is there any member of the board that would like to pull an item from consent for question or comment? Is there any member of the public that would like to pull an item from consent for question or comment? All right.
All right.
Seeing you, I want to make a motion to...
So moved. This is Marilyn.
All right, motion by trustee Douglasson, seconded by trustee Green. All those in favor? Oh, we're going to do a roll call.
We're echoing.
I have muted all of you because we're getting a lot of feedback. Rick, I'm getting feedback from your phone, so when you're not speaking, please mute your phone. So I will do a roll call for, for this particular item. And let me go ahead and go down the list. If you could unmute yourself, Yuri?
Aye.
Rick Johnson?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Lauren?
Aye.
Robert? Rosalyn?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion unanimous. All right, next, we are into new business. Item 7A is an action to approve the Monterey Peninsula Community College District Resolution Number 2019-20-119, reaffirmation of commitment to public health and safety at the, and the district's mission during the novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Martin?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Anderson, and I appreciate the board's consideration of adoption of this resolution this afternoon. This resolution outlines the timeline of events over the last two and a half weeks, and reconfirms the board and the college's commitment to providing a health, healthy and safe learning environment, to continuing education, and to ensuring that equity principles, even in a time that we're in, still remain at the forefront of our decision-making, and ultimately reconfirms the board's commitment in a health and safety perception to continue the mission of the college and continuing to provide learning environments for our students to continue to excel in their academic programs.
Can you speak to Mr. Student Trustee Mountain's questions at this point?
Yes, and in regards to the, the nursing program, we're currently working with a couple of agencies to determine the best route forward. We do have shelter-in-place orders at both the state and county level that not only apply to MPC, but also apply to the clinical sites in which our nursing programs rely upon to complete the hours of instruction that they need. Right now, the chancellor's office is working diligently with the Board of Registered Nurses to identify potential exemptions to the current curriculum structure of hours required in the classroom and in the clinical sites. So as we kind of put the pieces together in respects to the state and local orders, the chancellor's office guidelines, and the Board of Registered Nurses curriculum exemptions or directions, we will continue to have those discussions and ultimately make a decision that's in the best interest of our students and our program and our faculty, but also a decision that is in line with the official orders by our state and county health officials. So that information is coming through the pipeline now. Those conversations are happening every day, and ultimately, we are sneering the, the process of making a decision sometime next week as to what the next steps are moving forward.
Thank you. You're muted, Robert. There you go, we can hear you now.
Oh, thank you. So my, my information is that yesterday, both the state and county health officers indicated that nursing students and nursing faculty were exempt from the order. And, and that there were, that, you know, the, the, their approval for, for nursing program, not only the nursing program, but other emergency, emergency programs or essential services programs like fire and EMT and things like that would be exempt from the order. And, and my question is, what does that mean in terms of partially opening the campus and when?
Yes, thank you very much for that question. And if I, I believe I'm referring to the, the same guidance that you may be referencing, but the state guidance that was given for essential functions, I believe if you look at the specific wording, it identifies the workers of programs that are identified as essential to continue their function in the operation of those programs. It does not specifically say that students may come back to campuses and engage in face-to-face instruction. So that language that exempts these critical functions on the surface as it's read verbatim exempts the workers of this program or of these programs to continue their work.
No, it actually specifies students.
Okay, then--
And their teacher.
Hello, Robert?
Yes, yes, it specifies the students and their teachers. I, I mean, I can quote it verbatim if you want. Well, and, and I mean, this is probably not a, a, a board issue, but what I, what I, what I'm-- I, I'd like, I'd like the emerging reality and the, the declaration that we're about to vote on to be congruent and, and accurate. And, and I'm, I'm sure you will work out the, the details of that shortly. But, but, you know, for, just for the point of, of voting on this, on this issue, assuming that students, that the state and the county allows students to come, certain students, you know, students in, in these essential services programs, how will that work? And how does that affect the declaration that we're adopting?
And just to make sure we're talking about the same guidance, student trustee Mountain, would you please reference, as you mentioned, the specific language that you're referring to?
I, I can, let me, let me pull it up. It, it'll, it'll take a minute because I, I don't have it handy. Okay. I, I did send it to you, however, earlier today.
And that's why I want to make sure we're looking at the same document, because I did not see the term "students" used in the document that is being referenced.
Right. Okay.
Well, while that's making its way through cyberspace, I think that we should keep in mind that the, the resolution that's before us is a documentation of a timeline of events that has occurred. And I imagine that we will have to take similar actions as this is an ever-evolving situation. So effective, or as of March 18th, these are the things that the, the district has done to continue operations, ensure the health and safety of our students and our faculty and staff, and be, and fulfill our mission. So just to keep that in mind.
I, I do have the text, if you'd like me to read it.
Yes, please do.
Okay, it says, and this is essential critical infrastructure workers, which now include workers and instructors supporting academies and training facilities and courses for the purpose of graduating students that comprise the essential workforce of all identified critical work sectors. You know, essentially, I mean, that's, that's the reference.
Yes, and thank you very much. And what we've worked with the chancellor's office on is the identification of that language is specific to the workers and instructors, instructors who are working in the programs. The remaining question that that document does not answer yet is are students allowed back on campus in a face-to-face modality of instruction? So that's the remaining question that we need to work through with our state legislators and the chancellor's office before inviting our students back into the classroom.
So could you give us a sense of how long that will take?
I think that that information is evolving every day, and the chancellor's office and the legislators, as well as the Board of Registered Nursing, are making decisions based on information that is constantly changing, as many institutions in this environment are. So we are continuously getting feedback from the chancellor's office saying those conversations are happening, and as soon as they feel comfortable in giving definitive guidance, they will do so. But as of right now, with the uncertainty of the totality of the situation we're currently in, they are not giving definitive deadlines to decisions that need to be made at this point.
Who has to say yes, then? I think I heard three different items.
Well, ultimately, we would not promote or allow face-to-face instruction unless we had the go-ahead from the state, county, and chancellor's office organizations.
Okay, but it's in the works.
Those conversations are in the works.
Great, thank you.
I, I'd just like to say that, you know, on a, if you do any kind of reasonable cost-benefit analysis, not including people who are in two or three months, you know, on the front lines of fighting this epidemic, it doesn't make sense.
Alright, well, so, thank you for bringing that forward, and I will point out that student trustee Mountain was addressing an item or an issue that was brought forward to the board via our online public comment. So I did see the individual who had made the comment earlier on the line, this loop, but I don't see her anymore. So is there anyone else from the public who wanted to make a comment to board action item 7A? Alright, not seeing any, are there any, did any trustee have a question or comment about the resolution? Mr. Johnson?
No.
Okay. Alright, so in that case, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2019-20-119.
So moved. Second.
Alright, I heard Mr. Johnson for, oh yes, Lauren?
No, I was just merely saying, we already did it, but there was a lot of echoing, never mind.
Okay, so I, I heard a motion from trustee Johnson, a second from trustee Dun Gustafson, and can we have a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Chair Yuri Anderson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lauren Stack.
Aye.
Trustee Rosalyn Green.
You're muted, Rosalyn.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Marilyn Dun Gustafson.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Johnson.
Aye.
Advisory vote, student trustee Robert Mountain.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item 7B is another action item, approve Monterey Peninsula Community College District Resolution Number 2019-20/120, State of Emergency Declaration and Delegation of Authority to Implement CUPCCAA Emergency Actions. Mr. Martin?
Yes, thank you very much. And this is a resolution for the board's consideration that is fairly standard when agencies declare a state of emergency. This allows the superintendent and president position, as well as the vice president of administrative services, the ability to make purchases of goods and/or services that are necessary for the continuance of operations without following the specifics outlined in California Public Contract Code, which would require advertising bids for a certain amount of time and going through a longer public purchasing process. In the statem of an emergency, when declared by California, organizations have the flexibility to make significant purchases as needed just to continue operations. So this resolution would allow the superintendent and president and the vice president of administrative services throughout the time of the next month until the next board meeting, the ability to do so if needed. At this point, we do not feel as if the likelihood of having to use this is high. We hope to not have to use it, but in the event that we need to make a purchase to continue operations, this would give us the flexibility and the legal authority to do so.
Great. Can you let us know if we received any public comment via email for this item?
We have not.
Great. Alright, are there any trustees who have a question or comment on the item? Any member of the public like to make, ask a question or make a comment? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2019-20/120.
Come on, dude.
Second.
Motion by trustee Stack, seconded by trustee Johnson, a roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Yes, Chair Yuri Anderson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lauren Stack.
Aye.
Trustee Rosalyn Green.
Aye.
Trustee Marilyn Dun Gustafson.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Johnson.
Aye.
Advisory vote, student trustee Robert Mountain.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to action item 7C is to accept the February 2020 monthly financial statements.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Anderson, and these are the monthly financial statements through February 29th, believe it or not, 2020. Approximately 66% of the way through the fiscal year, our budget numbers are still valid and being tracked very closely. We are on target to meet our budget expectations. At this point in time, we have nothing unusual or unforeseen in regards to financial or budget transactions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Questions from board members?
I guess I have a question. I noticed that there's very little activity regarding the OPEBs, the, the post-employment benefits, other post-employment benefits. Is that because we, we do this in one fell swoop at the end of the year? When we see how much money we have, perhaps?
Well, thank you very much for the question, and the answer is yes. Is the, our contribution to OPEB is done through a one-entry process that is typically done at the end of the year as we close the books to transfer a one-time amount into our other post-employment benefit accounts. So it is a one-time entry that's typically done as part of the closing process each fiscal year.
Thank you.
Other questions from trustees? Is there any, did we receive any comments, written public comments?
No.
We didn't, we did not, Chair Anderson.
Great, is there any member of the public who would like to speak to action item 7C, accepting the February 2020 monthly financial statement? Alright, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve 7C.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Johnson, seconded by trustee Stack, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Chair Yuri Anderson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lauren Stack.
Aye.
Trustee Rosalyn Green.
Aye.
Trustee Marilyn Dun Gustafson.
Aye.
Trustee Rick Johnson.
Aye.
Advisory vote, student trustee Robert Mountain.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Alright, so moving on to action item 7D is approve a memorandum of understanding dated March 16th, 2020, between Monterey Peninsula Community College District and Monterey Peninsula College Teachers Association regarding Spring 2020 Emergency Planning for Instructional Continuity. Mr. Martin?
Yes, thank you very much. And before we provide a brief summary of the item, I would like to thank Dr. John Cannoli and our labor partners at MPCTA for their quick collaborative effort on ensuring that as we transition into our new reality, we are acknowledging the contract that we agreed upon last July, and we made amendments as needed. So the work was done in a very collaborative manner, and I would like to thank both of those folks for, for their work in presenting this item to the board this afternoon. The item has three identified areas in which we would like to suspend in the current existing agreement with our faculty. And those three items are the current faculty evaluations in the spring semester to postpone the evaluative process to the fall semester for faculty who are in the process of starting a course online, are starting a course in person, and then finishing it online. We're going to transition the evaluation process to the fall semester. The last two components of the MOU is to suspend the 25-hour requirement of on-campus for our faculty. As many of our faculty are teaching all online right now, we have suspended the requirement that they spend 25 hours a week on-- we have suspended the requirement that they spend 25 hours a week on campus physically at MPC. And then the last component of the MOU is to suspend the five hours of committee work, and that five hours can now be used for the continued development and movement to online instruction. So it provides a bit more flexibility in ensuring that the curriculum is translated to an online format. So those are the three components of the CTA bargaining agreement that the board approved in August that we are now requesting for the board to approve, and suspension for the remainder of the spring semester, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does a CTA agreement cover part-time instructors?
It does, trustee Mountain.
And I ask that because I'm sure we're aware of the enormous time that goes into retooling some of these courses for online purposes, and I'm wondering how particularly part-time teachers are compensated for that?
Sure, and we did offer available options for compensation in the training and the Canvas instruction that we were providing our faculty members during the initial components of the transition. So full-time and part-time faculty members, or excuse me, part-time faculty members were able to be compensated additional hours for attending Canvas training. We are also, throughout the spring break term, or the spring break week, offering the option of being compensated hours for continued transition to online format. So the offer has been extended, and we want to make sure that any work that our part-time faculty does over the next couple weeks is compensated accordingly based on the current agreement.
Good, thank you.
Other questions or comments from trustees? Did we receive any public comment on this item? I saw Jermaine shake her head and mouth no, so I'm going to say no. Is there any? Go ahead, Jermaine.
No, there was none.
Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to the item? Lyndon, are you raising your hand or are you covering your camera? Okay, I have one question. I'm closing public comment on this item. The actual agreement itself says it's in effect as of March 13th, but then at the bottom, it says the MOU is entered into on the 16th day. Is that just for signing purposes, or is that a discrepancy in the document?
No, that is just for signing purposes, so the board is being asked to approve and confirm this MOU that was agreed upon between the district and MPCTA.
Okay, and then I've asked for this before, I'm going to ask again, if we can get written names in addition to the signatures on these sorts of documents, because I'm guessing it's Dr. Cannoli and Lauren Blanchard who signed, but I'm not 100% sure, and God forbid somebody be hit by a bus or something else, and we have no idea who actually signed these documents.
And that is correct, that it was Dr. Cannoli and MPCTA President Lauren Blanchard, and we will include written names moving forward, so thank you for that, Chair Anderson.
Thanks. All right, so if there are no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve Action Item 7D MOU between the district and the CTA.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Stack, seconded by trustee Dun Gustafson. And a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Chair Yuri Anderson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lauren Stack?
Aye.
Trustee Rosalyn Green?
Aye.
Trustee Marilyn Dun Gustafson?
You're muted, Marilyn.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Rick Johnson?
Aye.
Advisory vote, Student Trustee Robert Mountain?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous.
Thank you. All right, so our last new business item is 7F, action to proclaim the week of April 13th through 17th, 2020, as the week of the young child.
It's E.
Has there ever made an E ahead of that one?
Oh, I'm sorry. You are right. Thank you for that. And this one, I'm so proud of, I can't believe I skipped it. 7E, action, amend Monterey Salinas Transit Contract to Expand the Free Fair Zone.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Anderson, and I share your excitement for this item, and appreciate several weeks ago when you put us in contact with individuals from MST to start the discussions about expanding our free ride program here at MPC. And I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge Mr. Larry Walker for his work on this agreement. Mr. Walker really ran with the connection that was given to him and really worked diligently with our MST partners to develop the contract amendment that's in front of the board this afternoon. Our previous agreement with MST allowed MPC students with a MPC ID to receive a free ride away from an MPC location. So at any one of the seven bus stops around an MPC campus, students were able to ride away from MPC free of charge. This agreement expands our existing program to do a completely free program to where our students with a student ID card can now ride the MST transit system completely free of charge. So I wanted to take a moment and recognize our MST partners. I believe we have Lisa Reinheimer joining us this afternoon, and I wanted to take a moment to see if Lisa had anything to comment on in regards to this MOU we're so very excited about. Lisa?
To us as well. I do want to let you know that, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. I did want to let you know that during this coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic, we are actually offering all passengers free transportation to make sure that they will keep their social distance and what have you. So anyone can ride for free right now, but once things get back to normal, once you start getting your campus back up in session and we start charging fares again, we'll kick in this free fare program, and certainly for the next academic year, we'll be looking at the expanded free fare program with you all again. So I wanted to be upfront and let you know that times are unprecedented right now, but we're managing through it, and we certainly can use any positive partnerships as a sign that we will get through this whole thing. So I certainly appreciate all of your support and very excited to be offering this to your students.
Thank you very much, Lisa, and with that, Chair Anderson, I'd be happy to address any questions the board may have.
So any member who'd like to ask a question or make a comment?
Actually have a question or two about the contract terms. The first one is a $60,000, up to $60,000 contract. Where is that $60,000 coming from? And the second question is a couple of terms that are in the contract, professional services and reimbursement for ad time. Those are things I didn't quite understand.
So if I understood your questions correctly, you're wanting to know the source of the $60,000 funding for the program and clarity on professional services and funding for ad time. Is that right?
That's correct.
Larry or David?
Yes, I can jump in, and the source of funding is our MPC Promise Grant that we received from the state of California, which is funding intended to expand educational opportunities for individuals who come from underserved populations. So we are excited to put those grant funds to good use and are excited to continue the potential of this partnership with those funds moving into next year. The professional services component of the contract, Dr. Stack, could you tell me where you're looking at in the exact agreement?
Between this view and Google Chrome, and get to the actual contract. It is on the, on item three, MPC shall pay MST for their services as follows. There's $60,000, and ahead of the $60,000, not to exceed $60,000. Says the total amount of the contract, including both professional services and reimbursement for ad time, shall not exceed $60,000.
Yes, thank you for that question, and those are standard, that's standard language in our professional services agreement. So that does not specifically mean that we will be having ad time, but that is language that our legal counsel has advised that we include in all of our professional service agreements. Because MST is providing transportation services, on our books and records, we do classify it as a professional service that we're receiving. Therefore, we use our professional service agreement as created by our legal counsel.
Thank you.
Other questions from trustees? I had a question, because, you know, I always want more. Are students who are dual-enrolled, one that we had talked about, they didn't necessarily have MPC IDs, and I'm wondering if there's been any conversation about how we provide access to those students to this program, particularly because we've had a lot of conversation about our Marina High School dual-enrolled students having to traverse through some pretty sketchy neighborhood to get from their high school campus to our college campus, and wanting to make sure they're connected.
Thank you very much for that question, Chair Anderson, and we have started initially the conversations about how to expand access to MPC student ID cards to all of our students, including our dual-enrolled students. That's a conversation that will require some logistical discussions between MPC, our student leadership group, our student outreach folks, as well as our high school partners as well. So those conversations will continue to take place in the near future, and we absolutely acknowledge the fact that we need to make sure we get an MPC ID card into the hands of every dual-enrolled student, so they may take advantage of this program as well.
Cool. Okay, I can't remember if I called for public comment on this, so if I didn't, if I did, I'm doing it again. Is there any member of the public who'd like to make a comment or ask a question about this contract? All right, hearing none. Would entertain a motion to approve amending the MST contract to expand our free zone program.
So moved.
I heard a motion by trustee Johnson?
Second.
And a second by trustee Green. Before we do our roll call vote, I just wanted to extend my appreciation to Larry and David and Lisa and everyone who is involved in moving this conversation forward. For the other trustees, I received really great feedback from several members of the MST board when Mr. Martin went out to be present at their meeting when this contract was being considered by their board, and I believe they had unanimous support for it as well. So hopefully, we will have unanimous support this afternoon in getting our students better access to transportation services. And I guess I just wish that Yuliana was still around, because I remember her standing in front of our board talking about the expense and the time she spent traveling on the bus to get to MPC from Salinas, and this would, I think, something that speaks to her heart. So with those comments, we will take a roll call.
Thank you. Chair Yuri Anderson?
Full-heartedly, yes.
Vice Chair Lauren Stack?
Aye.
Trustee Rosalyn Green?
Aye.
Trustee Marilyn Dun Gustafson?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Johnson?
I will say aye, because we've waited years for this, and I also want to thank Chair Anderson, because she just didn't let up on pushing. Appreciate it great. That was nigh.
Thank you. And advisory vote, Student Trustee Robert Mountain?
Abstain.
All right, well, I believe the motion passes, and thank you for the work. And Lisa, thank you for joining our meeting and hopefully carrying forward our enthusiasm for the partnership with MST as well.
Great, thank you.
All right, so with that, we will move to 7F, which I was jumping the gun on, which is an action item to proclaim the week of April 13th through 17th, 2020, as Week of the Young Child.
Yes, thank you very much, and this is something that MPC has done for several years now in line with the nation declaring this week the week of the child. We've historically have had several events on campus during this week, specifically in our early childhood education department and our child development center. Unfortunately, with the circumstances, we may not be able to have those in-person events that we've had in the past, but regardless, it's very important for the board to consider acknowledging the fact that April 13th is the week of the child, and we would like the board's consideration in adopting this proclamation.
Any questions or comments from the board? All right, from the public, did we receive any written comments?
No, we did not.
Okay, great. Anyone on the phone want to make a comment or ask a question? All right, hearing none. I will just say that the childcare workers are included in the essential workforce, so want to personally thank those folks for continuing to work for families that need a safe and caring place for their children to go during this time. And as someone who has children that are included in that young child classification, they are incredibly full of wonder and light and challenges of a day-to-day basis. Taking a week to celebrate all of the life that they bring into this world and the imagination that they can inspire in us to be better is a wonderful thing to do, and I'm happy to be proclaiming this week as the week of the young child, and sad that we won't be able to get to have some of those interactions that we may have had in the past, but hope that next April, things are back to normal, and we can spend a little time drinking juice out of tiny cups and eating sandwiches and cut up apples with the folks, and maybe get down on a playground or read a story or something.
And sitting in little chairs.
Tiny chairs. All right, so is there someone who'd like to make a motion to approve Action Item 7F?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so motion by trustee Green, seconded by, I think I heard trustee Johnson. So can we have a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Chair Yuri Anderson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lauren Stack?
Aye.
Trustee Rosalyn Green?
Aye.
Trustee Marilyn Dun Gustafson?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Johnson?
Aye.
Advisory vote, Student Trustee Robert Mountain?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous.
Great, thank you. All right, we're moving on to Section 88, the end of trustee comments and administrator the end of Trustee Comments and Administrator Reports. The first item, A is Report from our Superintendent President.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Anderson. And the board does have my written report, the March mailbag. And I'll be brief in a few additional comments in regards to the wonderful work that this campus has done. From every corner of this campus, we've had folks step up and answer the call over the last two and a half weeks of a time in which there was no roadmap. There is no roadmap for community colleges throughout the state as we deal with work with the environment that we're in. So, I just wanted to take a minute to reiterate my true admiration for the people that we have here on this campus because the talent and dedication of the individuals who work and study here at MPC is truly second to none. And if there was ever an example of that, it was the last two and a half weeks. And I sit here this afternoon so proud to be a part of this campus and this community. And I just wanted to acknowledge everybody here at MPC for their wonderful work. So, with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions?
David, I'd just like to say, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly want to thank you. And this is an appropriate time to do it. For all you've done in your leadership, both you and Chair Anderson have worked together. And our confidence in you is immense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we get any written comments on your report, David? So, just Trustee Mountain.
Would it, yeah, these are the kind of questions that began earlier in the session. And I just wanted to get crisp answers to them. I wonder if we could have a description of what the approval process is for canceling classes?
That is something that we can eventually provide. That is a collaborative process that's going to require the input of numerous stakeholders on our campus. So, as we continue to work through these conversations in a way that is collaborative over the next week, week and a half, information about the process will be made available to the broader campus.
Well, so, at what level is the decision going to be made? At your level, at the dean's level, or what?
So, that's a collaborative process. Not one person, I would say, is going to be responsible for making any decision on any specific class. The decision to either continue or cancel a class is a broad conversation that's going to include analysis of the students within that class, where the class sits on academic pathways, the faculty and department/division chair input, as well as the dean and vice president's input. So, there's not one person who will be making sole decisions regarding any of our class decisions over the next two or three weeks.
So, what I hear is that it will at least involve a vice president?
Yes.
Okay. I'm wondering if it would be possible for you to commit to bringing us a list of canceled classes at the next board meeting? And also identifying any class that is going to, that its cancellation will preclude the graduation of a student?
That is, that is information that we can work on putting together. At this point, we haven't canceled any classes. So, that information is something that would have to be developed and coordinated as we move forward. Ultimately, I don't think at this point we would cancel or remove any classes that would preclude a student from graduating at the end of this spring semester. Because ultimately, part of the class discussion process is going to be to evaluate the students who are in that class to make sure we are doing, we are doing just that, that we're not prohibiting any of the students from moving forward with graduation.
That's very good. I'm very glad to hear that, President Martin, because I have, and many other people have concerns about potentially canceled classes. And I'm heartened to know, A, that it's going to, you know, people, that the administration is going to take a long look at these and that they don't anticipate short circuiting anybody's graduation. There's a lot of concern about that.
And I definitely appreciate that comment, Student Trustee Mountain. And as we work forward through this process, it's a process that, based on the current circumstances, is something that is not defined based on past experiences. So, we're going to rely on a group of individuals as we have these discussions. And based on the current situation and with so much unknown and uncertainty down the line, it would not be fair for me or anybody else to sit here today and promise that we won't cancel any classes or we won't remove classes from the schedule over the next semester. But I can promise you that the decisions and the discussions will be collaborative. And we will do everything we possibly can to make sure that we limit the potential of a student not graduating to the best of our ability.
That's very good to hear. And one couldn't ask for more, given the circumstances. I did have one random question, if I can just take another minute or two. The question about insurance for students, if students are in programs and contract the virus, is there coverage for them?
That is a great question. And because of the situation, I hate to start every response with, we are in uncharted territory. So, definitive answers are not yet known by multiple agencies throughout the state. We do have student insurance. And that covers the needs or medical costs associated with any MPC affiliated activities. Now, would that cover a specific long list of situations to where a student may potentially become exposed one day? I don't have the response to that at this point. But that's ultimately things that MPC, as well as every other community college, are currently working through right now.
I would think that would be, the answer to that question would affect a lot of other decisions down the line.
And I think there are several community colleges, if not all of them, that are very anxious to receive some guidance from our insurance providers, as well as the chancellor's office on how to potentially handle these situations if they do arise on local campuses.
Great, thank you.
Any other trustee have a question for Mr. Martin? All right. So, we'll deem that report received. And we'll move on to the report from the Office of Advancement. Becky, are you still on the line?
I am. Can you hear me, Yuri?
I can.
Great. So, first off, I wanted to share with you all that we received $16,124 in the month of February. And as you can see, you have my written report. But I do have a few things to add to that. The most important of which is that the foundation has set up a COVID-19 Student Relief Fund. We're working collaboratively with Student Services to provide grant assistance to students who have been impacted by the COVID pandemic. So, I want to thank Francisco and everybody in financial aid, as well as Larry Walker, for working with us on that. Since we sent the email setting up the fund, so far, we've had 15 people donate. And I am proud to say that 75% of those donors are either MPC faculty, staff, or MPC foundation staff. So, I want to thank everybody who is listening right now, who's already contributed, and encourage everybody to please help us get the word out. We are applying for a couple of grants. And I was discussing partnering with the community foundation earlier today with Mr. Baldwin to try to leverage all of the available resources that we have that we're able to get to the students that really need this help right now. So, that has been at the top of everybody's minds and something we've worked hard to get together. The other update is just to confirm, in my written report, I indicated that it was likely we would not be having the president's address on April 24th. And that is, in fact, the case. So, we are working with the Hyatt to see whether we'll potentially reschedule that event for later this year or hold it in April 2021. So, I will share that information out as soon as I have further updates. But that's it from me, unless anybody has any questions or comments.
Becky, I was wondering if you could tell us a bit about the timing for reviewing the scholarship applicants and awarding their scholarships? How are you going to do that remotely?
So, first of all, Marilyn, are you referring to our regular scholarships or to the emergency grants?
The regular scholarships.
Okay, thank you. Good question. We, all of those scholarship applications are already online. And actually, the review already takes place remotely, for the most part, because we have a number of volunteers and foundation board members that access awards spring from their own homes or offices. And so, the rest of us who are faculty and staff that are on that advisory group are also now reviewing remotely. And so, we go in, we score them. And then, we do have a meeting on April the 8th that has been, will be moved into a Zoom format, just like this, where we go through and make our recommendations. So, we are not anticipating any delays to our timeline on that. We are regrouping to consider how the scholarship ceremony, which had originally been planned for May 7th, may have to be reimagined. But the payments themselves for nearly all of these scholarships actually take place in the fall after the students have re-enrolled. So, there shouldn't be any disruption to this process. There's been just an increased need, which we're hoping to meet through the emergency grants.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. And I did skip over that item because it was in my written report. But you can see from there that we had almost double the amount of scholarship applications we received last year, which is just an incredible increase. And I do attribute a lot of that to the additional workshops that Gina Bianchi in the foundation office was holding throughout the spring semester, as well as the extended timeline that she was able to get the scholarship application ready for them to start in December. So, we really appreciate the work that she did there, as well as several other partners across campus that helped with those workshops.
Well done. I'm delighted to see how many applicants that were there. And that's what prompted my interest as to the timing.
Yeah, it did create a little bit more work for our advisory group members. We were expecting everybody to read, I think it was originally 30, and now, everybody's got 40 or 50. So, we really appreciate, yeah, the work that they do. But we have, we expand that group every year. We get new volunteers. And we're always looking for extra help. And it's a, it's a time-consuming but very rewarding process.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Terrific.
Any other questions?
Lauren?
Well, I have, I have one question, more or less on the same item. I have a particular interest, as you probably recall, in the OSHA or scholarships. I kind of want to know what's happening with them. Are they part of that group? Is that handled separately? Or do you even have the answer now?
They, no, they are handled through the same scholarship process. And the reason for that is we, our students only have to complete one application. And the software system then matches them up with any scholarship they are eligible for based on their answers to the application. So, yes, the OSHA scholarships are a part of our scholarship application process.
Other questions from trustees? I have a question on the marketing aspect of your Office of Advancement report. I've been noticing some different sorts of materials in the public. And I'm just wondering, if you've got a new committee forum, when we're going to see another report or presentation to the board on marketing efforts, conversations around brand identity? We have a number of different ways that we visualize ourselves in the community. And just wondering, you know, if you're going to be tightening that up?
Yes, great question. Thank you. We had, we had hoped to get that marketing committee together, perhaps late March, but with everything that had pulled our communicate. We've been heavy on the communication side of marketing and communications in the last week or two. But we will get that group together. And we're going to be reaching out to some marketing consultants to get some proposals in to help walk us through a broader marketing strategic planning effort, which I hope will, yes, certainly help to solidify our brand and provide a direction for all of the marketing materials that come out. So, we did have, we had a number of digital ads, a campaign going that helped with promoting enrollment for our late spring classes. I'm sure that many people sitting at home right now and being on their computers may also be helping with driving enrollment in those classes. And I hope that they're getting bombarded with our digital ads as they're, as they're working away on their computers. So, yeah, we've got a lot going on in that area. And we're working to be nimble and to be able to flex to the ongoing changes and the situation as it evolves. But we do plan to get, to go through a more lengthy strategic planning process, hopefully, starting up, most likely at this point, we'll start up in the fall when everybody is back. But we can at least get some of the groundwork done in the meantime.
I had a question about the scholarship that's being set up in honor of Lydia Davis.
Yes.
Could you tell me what the mechanism is for collecting that, those funds for donors?
Yes. And actually, it's not at this time determined that it will be a scholarship. So, I'm working with Lynn, as well as his daughter, Janie, to discuss how they would like that fund to be used. But we have established the Lydia Davis Fund within the foundation and are receiving gifts for that fund. And so, folks can send them in by check or going online and just in the comments field, making a note that it is in honor of Lydia Davis or for the Lydia Davis Fund. And then, as I said, we're working with the Davis family to see what's the best use that really honors Lydia's legacy and, in particular, the way that she was most impacted at MPC as a reentry student.
The Student Council would like to make a contribution to that fund. And I think they'd probably like to know what it's being set up for. So, perhaps that's down the line a bit?
I think it will be down.
I shared it. Yeah, I shared it with them. As, you know, Lynn had said that this was going to be a scholarship to benefit returning women. And I offered it on that basis. But I'm sure I could make, you know, change that. So, I'll wait until I hear from you.
Yes, and I really appreciate the students wanting to support that effort. And I will let you know once we have, once Lynn has decided exactly how he would, he would like it to be set up.
All right. So, if there are no other questions or comments from the board, was there anyone in the public who had a question about the report from the Office of Advancement? All right, hearing no one chime in, we will deem that report received. Thank you. Student Services Report, Mr. Walker.
Mr. Walker, you there?
Yes, I am.
Oh, wait, I did it again. Academic Affairs Report, Mr. Cannoli, Dr. Cannoli.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. I apologize for not having a written report to you this month, but as I'm sure you can imagine, we're in all hands on deck mode trying to take care of everyone with the current situation. But I do have some updates I'd like to share. President Martin already discussed much of the information about where we're at, how we got here, and the fact that we're still working on plans to clarify where we're going together forward. But I wanted to provide a little bit of insight as to the things that are going on behind the scenes. I'm sure you can imagine that where we're at right now and the idea that we're transitioning instruction online is no small task. This is a pretty incredible feat for our college to be faced with, and we know that there are a lot of unanswered questions right now, and there will continue to be unanswered questions, but we're working together to resolve those. And we are taking the guidance and information we receive every day to continue to work towards answering those questions. But what we have seen is that our campus, our faculty, our staff, our administration, everyone, including students, is coming together to try and figure out this path forward. From an academic affairs standpoint, this might answer some of the questions that have come up, and it might also open up some additional questions. But as I'm sure you can imagine, our primarily lecture-based classes are certainly, in most cases, able to transition online and even remain online through the remainder of the semester. And some of our lab, studio, and activity-based classes can also make that transition online, and even some of them can remain online. In all cases, we rely on the expertise of our faculty, who will help us determine what's appropriate for their discipline and how we can support the learning outcomes for the course so that the students can master the content that's necessary to be successful. Our faculty are working incredibly hard right now, as are everyone else on our campus, to find creative solutions right now, trying to find ways to move instruction online. And our faculty are incredibly dedicated to getting that done to help students succeed. We also recognize there are going to be some more challenging areas we're going to have to address. But the deans and division chairs are working tirelessly as well to support those faculty. They're supporting the transition to online instruction, and they're also working through those questions about what happens next and what do we do about those areas that aren't so straightforward in terms of sustaining online instruction where that might not be an option. As I mentioned, we continue to study the guidance every day we receive from the chancellor's office and from other agencies that are trying their best to help us as well. We're also looking at program-specific accreditation and certification guidelines because those also impact how we might choose to transition some of our courses online, if it's even possible, as well as how we might consider postponing some of the instructional time for a later date. In most cases, those kinds of scenarios are still waiting for some guidance, and so we're developing the plans as best we can. But we are discussing all possible scenarios to continue instruction and help make sure students can complete their goals, as President Martin mentioned earlier. And in addition to the instruction that's taking place right now, we recognize that we don't know what's going to happen next, and we're already looking ahead to summer and fall, just to be proactive, making sure that we have the ability to talk through some scenarios well in advance of any additional complications that might arise. And for those faculty who are transitioning online, we've rallied support from across campus. It's all hands on deck right now. Our online education team has been working tirelessly, all hours of the day, to support faculty and students. And I want to call out a couple of individuals just because they deserve it right now, although we could name every single member of our campus and say the same thing right now. But Steve Bremer is our online campus, our campus online instructional technology specialist. He's been our go-to person for supporting online instruction for many years. His support has always been incredible, and now more than ever, we appreciate him even more, and he's doing a fantastic job. He is the go-to person for all of our faculty and for students to get support. We have two faculty coordinators for online education, Jared Turner from Administration of Justice and Christina Nicolaidis from Psychology. They are working with their peers to help them understand how to use the technology and also the pedagogy side, how to begin to even think about teaching online. You know, in all of the turmoil and the idea that we're shifting and moving so rapidly, we have to remember that the students, as Student Trustee Mountain had mentioned, are incredibly, they need information, they have a lot of questions and even fear, as do our faculty, and so we have to support our faculty as well. Many of them are being asked to entirely transform how they've done their jobs for years and years, to use tools and technology that they may have never had exposure to before. And it's with the support of these folks that those faculty members are even able to move forward, and we commend the faculty for being brave in trying this and the folks that are supporting them. We're also lucky to have some individuals who joined us just this year because of the grant we got to support online instruction, and we have them through the remainder of the academic year, and they've shifted their attention entirely to supporting faculty. Anita Crowley and Frank Silva are those two people. They're providing Zoom orientations to faculty and students. They're teaching faculty how to use Canvas. They're supporting online course design. They're dealing with accessibility issues and all sorts of other things. And then across campus, we've got folks like our IT team under the leadership of Mike Midkiff, who are scrambling to get computers in the hands of our faculty, get cameras and iPads and other technology and tools that our faculty need to begin to translate what they do in the classroom online. And Larry Walker and the Student Services Team doing the same thing for students. We have, with our library initially, and now through the El Centro CTRC area of Student Services, been able to loan out laptops to students, being able to direct them to free and reduced-cost internet services in the community. It really is all hands, trying to figure out how to support everyone moving forward and just get ourselves through this transition in a way that's going to keep people moving forward and set us up for success. And so just wanted to provide a little bit of that recap. Again, apologize it wasn't in writing, but I wanted to share some of the examples of how our teams are doing the best they can right now to support faculty and students, do what we need to do to keep ourselves moving forward while we still try and figure out how to navigate all of the guidance and information coming to address the issues that are still ahead of us.
Comment and a question?
Go ahead, Robert.
From the student's perspective, I would like to affirm John's description of the faculty's dedication to this. Having been a teacher myself, I appreciate the enormous effort and commitment that it requires to transition a course in a discipline that you love into a foreign medium. It's, it is more than difficult. It can be soul-wrenching at times. And I've sat with teachers doing this, and I know it's hard and I know the commitment is there. So I thoroughly concur with John's description and assessment of that. I do have a question about the amount of guidance that it's appropriate to give a faculty member, assuming, you know, they're moving into a new medium, while still respecting academic freedom. I mean, basic things like, you know, it would be appropriate to have these, you know, this level of office hours or, you know, opportunities for feedback or things like that. Is that, is that something that you contemplate doing, or do you think that that's prescribed by academic freedom?
That's a really great question, and what I will say is that we are doing that. We're providing faculty with the information about the basic requirements for online instruction. And online instruction does have more prescriptive requirements than a traditional face-to-face class might. Because of the nature of its environment, we have regulatory guidelines that even in this circumstance, we can't relax, which includes regular and effective contact, is the official term, between a faculty member and a student when we move online. And so as part of the getting started for online, we've put together a number of different kinds of resources for faculty to go through self-paced, online, as well as meeting with the team to understand the basics, the things that they really must do, and going through the step-by-step things they need to do first in terms of communicating with their students, giving their students an updated version of a syllabus that outlines the new activities that will be required, since they will likely be changing up some of what they would have done to be in a completely different modality. And then also things like accessibility and just responsiveness for online courses. So absolutely, there are guidelines beyond the technology itself, just about what's necessary to be an effective online teacher to meet the basic standards that we have.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Cannoli from the board? Well, I hope I speak for us all when we say you get a total free pass, John. You realize that you have been doing an incredible amount of work with the teams, and I'm so appreciative of everything that you've been leading in all the groups that have been getting together to make sure that our students have been able to continue to be engaged in learning and hope that you are taking care of yourself as well. And I hope the reason we're not seeing your face is because you feel like you haven't shaved and are so dirty from just being working that you didn't want to show us your quarantined casual, as my sister has coined it.
That might very well be true, and I appreciate that.
But we would totally understand, so thank you. And please let us know what the board can do to help support you and the academic affairs team to move forward and keep doing your work. All right, so if we don't have any other comments, we will deem that report received, which sounded like you were reading it. So you may have written something and just not sent it to us. And then we'll move to Student Services Report. Mr. Walker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, first and foremost, I just have to take a moment, and I know that we've been throwing accolades around, but working with the president's cabinet during this situation, these extraordinary times, is definitely an enlightening experience. The work that this team is doing is commendable. I've been doing this a long time, and you never plan for these types of events or activities. But with that being said, everyone is stepping up their game to make sure that our faculty, staff, and our colleagues are being supported to the best way possible. We don't have all the answers, but the work that's been going on over the past week has been extraordinary during these extraordinary times. So I just wanted to say hats off to president's cabinet and all their other colleagues. So thank you very much for that work. With that being said, I don't have a lot, but President Martin referenced that all student services is online, so that's a good thing. We made a swift and nimble move to get as many of our services online as possible, and I'm just happy to hear and happy to say that all our services are available online, not to the level of face-to-face, but they are available online to our students. At the program level, you have programs such as EOPS, TRIO, Veterans, are all communicating directly with students as well. It's important for us that students and all of us are being inundated with all different types of communication. So one of our goals, and you see when these joint communications come out through David, it includes an academic affairs piece as well as a student services piece, and we're trying to reference the same type of information so students can definitely have resources made available to us, to them, in a manner that is as clear and concise as possible. So I just wanted to put that out there and continue to reference individuals to the all-students email that go out, that went out on one and two occasions. On the, on one of those resources list, it has some key areas, and those areas that we were talking about earlier, such as students that are challenged by going from face-to-face to online. When in doubt, when in doubt, one of the resources, we encourage them to contact counseling for additional academic and counseling support during this transition period. That link is there, they're fully online, they're responding to email, they're responding to voicemails as well. We've increased our mental health counseling through our Student Health Services. There are more available, mental health interns available and taking additional calls and just putting in additional hours to support our students. On that resource list that we provided to students and all users, it references if any student has any issue with health or wellness, to contact Student Health Services, and there's some contact information there. As well as, I know we spoke earlier about the Ws, the EWs, and at the state level, the guidance from the chancellor's office coming down, which, while that is definitely good relief for our students, what we need to begin to continue to monitor is the federal government and Students on Federal Financial Aid, that guidance has not yet come down. So we want to make sure that when students are making a decision with these withdrawals, that is the state and refunds at the state level, we want to make sure that we carefully analyze each and every student's decision as much as possible because there could be financial aid implications for some of their decisions. We're hoping for some type of relief, but right now, the federal government, Department of, has not given us any guidance on how to address the Ws for students who are in classes. So that's something that we'll continue to monitor. As well as any questions whatsoever that may arise on this resource list that we said, we are funneling them through our admissions@mpc.edu or calling our admissions office at 646-4002. That is our go-to number for any and all questions related to student services or anything. That office has an infrastructure, they have a call system called Fresh Desk that is able to take volumes of calls that come in and disperse them to the appropriate individual in that area. So our protocol is it goes into our admissions.edu, MPC, at MPC.edu. They take the call, and then they disperse it out to the appropriate area, whether it be the VP of SS office, whether it be counseling, whether it be Student Health Services, whether it be for food pantry, wherever it may be. So I just want to draw individuals' attention to that resource list that has been given to students on multiple occasions through all-students email, and it is even posted on our COVID-19 website link that's on our main page that I know Cabinet made a decision to make it a sort of a shortcut there. Christian Darkin has done that, there's communication on that particular link that shows all the resources. Without trying to go on and on and on and all, just want to let you know that the greatest need that has been coming from our students is Wi-Fi access, access to laptops, our food pantry, and emergency grants. President Martin, along with VP Steve for Administrative Services, have made the decision to allow our students to continue to use the campus Wi-Fi in parking lots only. The campus is closed, but we are allowing students to come on in their cars, exercising social distancing, if in fact they are on campus, to utilize our campus Wi-Fi. That has been the single most greatest need that we're hearing from students. We're currently working with IT to see if we can purchase some additional hotspots that we can hand out to students, but those are backordered right now. The laptops that Dr. Cannoli had mentioned, we're giving out Chromebooks, we have about 50 of them made available to students, they can come and check them out. Again, a call comes into our admissions office, they will then deploy it to the VP of SS, then we will schedule an appointment for students to pick up their laptops. We're doing sort of drive-by services. The food pantry, we're still, we were limiting access to that, but we're now back up, still offering that service to students in the form of food bags, as well as gift cards to local grocery stores in the amounts of $25 or $50 that we are handing out to students in need who come with an identified need of basic skills need, excuse me, of basic needs. They would, there's a contact for that, as well as emergency grants. Becky had mentioned that Becky had mentioned that us rising to the occasion. What happened in about an hour and a half is we had key individuals come together, Student Financial Services, Francisco, Becky from the Foundation, Rosemary from Fiscal Services. We all got together in the span of an hour and a half, were able to come out with a plan to issue emergency grants to students. In less than a week, we just really announced it with less than a week, we have over 200 applications. Financial Aid has already processed over 120 of those applications, giving out $300 grants to our students. We've allocated over $40,000 in less than a week. So just a commendable job for individuals coming together during these extraordinary times to meet the needs of our students. It's truly amazing. I neglected to mention, we have a single point of distribution for all these areas, so students aren't wandering around campus. Our Career Resource Transfer Center, located in the general classroom, is our distribution center where students are calling and making appointments. We're up three days a week for about nine hours throughout the week to allow students to come in by appointment to pick up these basic needs, resources, as well as technology and the emergency grants if they do not have a residence where we can mail them to, we would be able to pick them up at that location. Otherwise, we're mailing out all the emergency checks to students. So that's pretty much it. I can try to answer any questions that may come out of this recent presentation.
Larry, where do students go to get food?
One of the most important things that they want to do is if they direct their admissions@mpc.edu. That's the easiest way to contact. If they were to contact admissions@mpc.edu and say that they are in need of food or something of that sort, the admissions and records would receive that, they would then send it over to our office, then we would contact the student and schedule an appointment for them to pick up their, their need.
So they'd pick it up on campus?
Correct, by appointment, yes.
Okay, all right. So I'm wondering if you, if you have any notion or whether you have any visibility into the number of students that have dropped a given course? Is that something that you would be aware of, or is that John's area?
At this time, we, we would work, we don't have that information readily available, but that would be something that John and or I would need to work with IT, our information technology, to pull a report that could show that. I'm sure that information could be available. It's not readily available in a report, but we could find a way to get that information if there was a need. But right now, I'd say, no, we don't have that. But we are getting calls that some students are thriving in their new environment and some students are having some difficulty in the environment. But before any action, we're encouraging them, per the information that went out to all students, is to contact counseling, counseling's still available online via email, to talk through these issues. They can talk with their instructor first and foremost, but if they have additional questions that may impact their transfer, their graduation, as John mentioned earlier, we're going to be working collaboratively to minimize that impact. We'll never know the true extent, but when in doubt, we're encouraging students to contact our counseling office, they're ready and prepared to fill these questions and try to work on an individual basis to come out with a plan that works best for the students in their particular situation.
I'm concerned about the, the number of students who are fading as opposed to dropping. In a number of occasions, you know, people have lost their jobs, they're questioning whether this, you know, it was a reasonable investment to, you know, in education, and they just don't know how to survive. And they just kind of walk away. And of course, that can have disastrous impact on their, you know, on their future academic careers. And it would be, I, I know this is hard, but I think that if there were some way for us to proactively reach out to people like that, it would, it would help.
That's a very, very good question. Again, one of the things that we're trying to be proactive in is in our, at the program level and through counseling, is that any students that may have been on probation or dismissal in a prior semester, we have those types of reports where we can do follow-up. But as I said, you know, this is relatively new information. Within the past week and a half, there's been a dramatic shift in the lives of our students and faculty and staff and administration. So again, all I can say is I think that we are trying to keep our ears to the ground to see what's happening with our students. Some of them are going to be wandering off, and we will never know until that comes out in a drop and/or something. But right now, it's a time where students aren't necessarily making decisions, they have not necessarily dropped or thinking about dropping. So those are very, very good questions. Again, I think all I can do in the charge and the challenge that I put out to everyone is to use this resource guide, and when in doubt, when we come in contact with individuals, ask them to proactively, as much as they can, get in contact with counseling before they're making decisions, to see how we can assist. That's going to happen on some level, and it's not going to happen with others. But I can tell you what, we're going to do our darndest to try to make sure we address each and individual question that comes our way. And we'll continue to reach out as much as possible to students to ensure that this, during these extraordinary times, we're going to try to mitigate the impact, not just in the present, but in their future plans.
We really thank you for that, Larry. So the work that you and your team are doing is also significant, and it sounds like you've put in a lot of supports and mechanisms for students to get contacted. We know that you hear the concerns that our student trustee has brought forward, and I'm certain you'll be working those into conversations as we move forward with future planning and as the situation continues to unfold. So just wondering if there is anyone else who has a question or comment for Larry about student services at this point? All right, so seeing none, we're going to go ahead and deem that report received. And we did have a written report for A administrative services report. Mr. Hagler, is there anything you wanted to add to what was provided to the board before we open it for questions?
I have nothing to add. I, you know, my report is a little bit of shifting gears, just providing a bit of information that came out this past week from the Anderson School of Business over at UCLA. Their economic forecast, interesting to me is that they actually issued a report and then two weeks later revised and reissued a report. That's how fast the economic conditions are changing. It's changing just as fast as the pandemic is spreading. That forecast is not great, they're projecting a recession, and we need to be mindful of the economic conditions that are going on that also will affect us. And that's my report.
Great. I had a question that I think followed in when you're mentioning of the workaround facilities, master planning that is on, and tech master plan is ongoing. And we had been scheduled to go out with a, I think, a community survey, and just wondering if that happened and kind of what is the plan for that conversation moving forward?
I think that is our next step. I would like to move forward with a survey. I've reached out to Arim Benny of the student body. I'm hoping to put together a survey. I think the challenge now is to gather feedback from students and the community at large.
About what the needs are?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Hagler on the administrative services report?
This will be my last question of the day, I promise. One of the needs that's been expressed to the student council is that there are some students who do not have a home environment in which they can study. I won't go into the details, but you can imagine that there are, you know, some, some difficult circumstances. Is there any way at all that the individual study rooms in the library could be made available on an individual checkout basis? I, I know that's hard, but, you know, can you envision any way to do that? And maybe I should address the question to David, but, you know, you were a likely target.
I can respond to that. You know, currently, we have a shelter-in-place order. I would expect, and I hope, that it will get lifted in the first week of April, and we can return to some level of normalcy. I think in the meantime, that's, that's the issue that we have to deal with, and so I would be cautious about inviting students back onto campus at this time.
I'm less hopeful that it will be lifted in the first week of April, just so you know, the county's ordinance has, or order has been revised to reflect the state to have an indefinite ending. So. All right, any other questions or comments for Mr. Hagler? No? Great, thank you, Steve. All right, so now we move to governing board comments. Anything from the board, let me just go to it, in general, or as it relates to any of the committees or boards that you sit on on our behalf? And we'll start with Vice Chair Stuck.
Well, let's see, it's, this is definitely not business as normal. At Community Human Services, we met the most recent time, which was a week or so ago, to more or less give our, the, the Executive Director of CHS more or less the same kinds of powers that we are giving our president. It's an emergency time. We're trying to figure out how to do triage. We have, there are a number of programs which we can't possibly close. As you know, we have a methadone clinic, most people are dependent upon those drugs. We have a residential 12-step program in Seaside, and it stays open, although we cannot take new people into it. So, so CHS has been actually fairly interesting, but we're more or less going down the parallel path with the, with MPC. It's just a highly unusual time, and nobody has, there's no precedent for it in our, in our experience. Let's see, it's been such a strange time that the, the the CEO Task Force on the Funding Formula decided that this, the issue that I've been touting for, for, you know, the past year, which is the fiscal cliff at the end of Hold Harmless, is important enough to be the primary focus, if not the only focus, of the, of the task force for the foreseeable future. So they decided to do that a month ago. At a meeting in Santa Rosa, I don't even remember the, the date. And then this hit right after that, the coronavirus hit right after that. We had decided that this issue was important enough to meet every other week for the foreseeable future. And the last time, the first time we were supposed to meet on every other week basis was, was a week and a half ago. And we canceled the meeting because, because it's such a strange time. I do have hopes that we are going to meet virtually this Friday. That's the big thing that's going on for me now. So that's all I have. Unless anybody has any questions?
Yes, yes. I keep waiting to see an announcement from you that circulated about seeking another term on the CCLC Board.
Oh, well, it is, it is going to be, it's close time to time to vote on those things. I have been sending out little, little, you know, my little campaign materials. So I'm actively, kind of actively involved in doing that, although again, it's a very strange time. You know, it's, there are vastly more important things than running for reelection to the Triple CT Board that we're, that we're all dealing with now. So I'm doing it.
I, I understand, Lauren, but I also value your tenure on that board, and I very much would like to see you reelected, and I don't want people to forget that you are out there working on their behalf. So I encourage you to market yourself, please. Every time I receive one from somebody else, I go, wait a minute, where's Lauren?
Okay, I'll send something out to you. I actually haven't, and I just, I didn't think you were voting on it this time, so I sent it out. But I will send it out for, in the very near future, maybe later on today.
Okay, okay.
Marilyn, since you're talking, do you want to give us a report or any comments?
Sure, I'd be happy to. That was the first thing on my mind, was the election for the CCLC Board, and I understand that we will be dealing with that in April at our next meeting. And then I was reading through the Coast Weekly, and, you know, their best list, and one of, one MPC teacher is listed in their best list. And of course, I am not, I don't have that at my hand at the moment, and I can't recall who it is. David, you might know who it is and can enlighten us, but I was, you know, it's a math teacher. I think that's fantastic.
I, I don't know who it is, Marilyn, but we can get that information.
Well, I can, I, you know, I can go down and read my report. I just wanted to recognize and salute the MPC teacher for being in as part of that best list. I think it was, I thought it was very fun. And then the other thing, I want to thank you, David, for the excellent leadership that you are providing MPC in this incredibly stressful, unusual, unstable time. I appreciate the all of the presidents are doing in support of the college. I know it's really an effort for everyone to transition. I know how uncomfortable it is for everyone to make these kinds of changes, but I salute your leadership, David. And I would like to say to my fellow trustees, I'd really like us to reconsider when we start our superintendent search. I'd love to be part of that decision before that my term ends. So I, I feel very strongly about that, and I'd like at some point to have an opportunity to talk about it again. That's it.
Thank you. Rosalyn?
Hi. So I just wanted to to say that, you know, we've, we're experiencing some unseen times with this shelter-in-place that has moved to stay at home. I want to commend our MPC family for the amazing job that you all have done in the swift transition. I know that President David did everything in his power to keep us stabilized. I think we were probably the, the last school, you know, to, to finally disband our campus. But again, a commendable job that you all have done and are doing and remain to do. Just want to also reiterate making sure that our students are aware of other resources that are available in the communities. Because I know that we have students that aren't necessarily from our community that may not actually know, you know, where to go for additional assistance. I know that there, there are a number of folks out working together to do things. I know that there, there are a number of, of folks out working together to do things. I also believe Comcast is also offering some internet services FYI for those that, um, you know, might have a problem with getting to the school to access a hotspot. Um, so there's just a, a lot of things happening right now. Then um, I also want to say that I was able to sit in on the White House briefing and um one of the speakers um spoke to companies repurposing and um I immediately thought about um our faculty who have um, what did they turned our, took our 3D printers and we're making masks for the hospitals. Like that is just like totally awesome, so go Lobos on that. Um, hope our news, I know we made it to KSBW, hope our news can make it to the White House. Um, because we're, again, we're on the ground, um, just doing a fabulous job. So um, we're, we're better together. I know we're here to offer out any help that we can during these times and um, thanks for, for job well done.
Any um Monterey County School Board's association news or update?
No, I don't have any, I don't, I don't have any update from, from Monterey County School Board.
Cool, thank you. All right, Mr. Johnson?
Here I am. Um, can you imagine if somebody came to the board this month and said, um, we want you to go completely online as a school before the beginning of next year? We would be totally freaked out and we would also say it's virtually impossible to do that. And yet it's been done and, and um I join all the trustees in being just amazed. Uh Marilyn, you wanted to know the best of. Um, I've also been looking at all the best ofs from the weekly. Um, downtown Monterey has more than anywhere and none of them are open. Um, we're dealing with, with an economy and certainly a recession that is unheard of in our lifetime. Downtown Monterey, we lack MPC students right now who are normally working in the businesses. And the few businesses we have open are those that are doing, um, our restaurants that are doing food to go. Uh, it's, it's hard on everybody. Uh, my understanding, we did close the, the large farmer's market we have in downtown Monterey because of social gathering, because we draw about 10,000 people for it and couldn't control those kinds of crowds. But my understanding is the MPC market is moving to Del Monte Center and it will open this Friday and they'll be able to control that on private ground. I'm excited to see that from an economic standpoint. Um, you know, one of the things that has bothered me the most in this and uh um the student trustees certainly talked about it and alluded to it is the social distancing. Going to college, part of that experience, that whole social fabric of working together and finding out how to do that is gone. Um, I'm hoping that we'll move away from talking about social distancing and start talking about individual distancing, but we have to somehow, and we're doing that. And thank you David Martin for that. We are keeping MPC as a social outlet, even if we can't be individually close to each other at that time. That'll end my sermon on that. Um, it's been just a amazing, amazing example of a community, an educational community coming together. And uh I certainly credit that to the leadership at all points, from president to vice president to deans and a faculty and staff that has been just amazing. I would like to echo what Marilyn said. I'd like us to move forward as possible as far as um, um selecting a, a permanent president. I think that we need to define normal and um that's going to be the greatest thing we can do. And I'm hoping that we will see that on the agenda next month to start moving forward on that. With all that said, everybody's doing a wonderful job, but uh hang in there. Get on your phones and look at each other every once in a while and let's um keep moving forward together. Thank you.
Thank you Rick. Mr. Mountain?
I think I've used my airtime for the day. Uh, just as a, as a valedictory, I would say that our whole country is suffering and I think our mission is to make sure that our students um are spared gratuitous pain. I mean, there is some inevitable pain, but, but there, there's certain kinds of dislocation, certain kinds of um ambiguity and deprivation that don't have to be. That, you know, if we can, if we can appeal to people to say, come on, let's do what's sensible and what's right. I think that we will, we will spare our students a lot of gratuitous pain. Not all pain, but at least that pain that's not necessary.
Yeah. Um. I don't have any comments really, other than to say thank you uh to all of you for adjusting to David and your team for making sure that we were able to do this virtual meeting so quickly and fluidly. Um, I appreciated the ability to call and, and text and be in communication and invite you to um think about your trustees as the resources we are and connecting with the community and other networks within this community to make sure that you have the information and resources that are needed to um keep our college and moving forward and our students supported. So um appreciate everyone for being on this call this afternoon and um, you know, I have, just kind of joking with my husband, he and I are both introverts. We've been training for this our whole lives. We are so ready to be sitting in our own rooms to a computer screen, so um I'm happy to, to be doing this with you all. But um, all right, so looking forward, we will expect to have another board meeting in April on the 22nd. I am forecasting that we will continue to be social distancing, uh individually isolating or wherever you want to communicate it and uh we'll be prepared to have a virtual meeting should we need to. Um, and we have table, the whole slew of activities or uh have TBDs next to them. So um I would encourage the, the district, the college to keep sending out the, the dates to hold those times on our calendars so we can be ready to celebrate um with our, with our students and our faculty when we have the opportunity to, to do so. But um, all right, with that, if there is nothing else for the good of the order.
I have a question. Uh, I, I heard two different trustees ask for a, a different agenda item than might otherwise have been the case for the April 22nd meeting. I would like to make sure that gets put on, but I'd also, I wonder if, I, I'm afraid that, that if we put it off till April 22nd, we might be uh shooting ourselves in the foot. I wonder if this rises to the level of the, the need for a special meeting for, of the board, which would happen maybe in a week or two, something like that. Uh, get, get the information we need to get to make sure we understand what the situation is, what we can do, what should be done, et cetera, and then decide what to do. So we have, certainly we should put it on the agenda for April 22nd, but I'd also like us to consider having a special meeting for this, for, for this particular item.
I certainly have free time.
Yeah.
It certainly was going to be an item on the agenda as April was the time when we'd be doing our quarterly reporting on board goals, so we can um, we'll know that it's there and we can figure out if we, we can have a conversation about a special meeting.
I, I think we might want to have that conversation now. The problem is if we stop, with, if we set it up for the agenda in April, we can't really start till May, you know, it's a, it's a long process. It's, it always takes a long time. Uh, we might, if we are, if we decide that this is the way we want to go, we might want to get an earlier start than April 22nd for the next step. That's all I'm saying.
Um, I, I hear that and
Yeah.
we can certainly have a special meeting if folks want to. I would be uncomfortable with doing that um while the majority of our people are on spring break. I realize that it's a virtual world, but I think that had been part of our consideration for previously about the timing of uh any sort of conversation, wanting to be sure that we provide ample opportunity for the campus community to be um able to access our conversation, so.
I think that's, that's quite well, it's well stated. I think that, that we have, we should not do it before the, the community comes back, before we're off of spring break, but, but that still gives us a great deal of time. And again, this is just sort of a preliminary precursor meeting that we have to have.
Um, also David, if you could um look at a, the schedule for after spring break to see if there is an opportunity for us to have this conversation again?
Yes, we can do that. Uh, spring break does end this Friday, so we would at the earliest be looking at next week for potential dates.
Plenty of time and I, and perhaps uh David, you can work with, with, with Jereen and Sean and get, and Yuri of course, and get something out.
Okay. Great. So with that, we will call this meeting adjourned at 6:29 PM. Thanks, I hope everyone has a great evening and that you continue to follow the guidance of our county health department, health officer and stay home.
Stay well.
Yeah, thank you.
Stay well, yeah.
Be safe.
Goodbye everyone. Thank you for your leadership Yuri. Goodbye David, I'm signing out.